The Concord Select Board at 5:05 on October 7th, 2024.
Great, and I'll take a roll call, Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Hartman?
Here.
Myself, Mark Howell, present, Mr. McKenna?
Here.
And Ms. Ravelli?
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to enter executive session to return to open session at 6:00 PM. The purpose of the executive session under Mass. General Law 38, Section 21, Part N2, is to discuss and conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation and bargaining sessions on a contract involving the town manager and the FY25 compensation package where the meeting may have an open, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you want to take a roll, Mark?
The Chair asked to declare that the meeting would have a detrimental effect.
He did.
Oh, you're, oh, the Chair.
Where is the Chair?
It would have a detriment, I declare that.
I so declare.
I so declare.
And then you also have to announce that you'll be returning to.
He did.
Six.
He did.
6:00 PM, right, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye, Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Ravelli?
Aye.
Okay.
Very good, so we're moving to executive session. October 7th, 2024, Select Board meeting, open meeting to order. Mark, would you please take a roll call?
Yeah, we're resuming the meeting that we opened at 5 o'clock. Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Ms. Hartman?
Here.
Mr. McKenna?
Here.
Ms. Ravelli?
Here, present.
And myself, Mark Howell, present.
The first order of business is to discuss the FY25 salary increase for the town manager. In our executive session, the board voted to award a 2.5% COLA increase and a 3.9% merit bonus for the FY25 compensation. Any discussion by the board? Can you hear, can you hear now? Can you hear now? Can you hear now, Wick? Okay, good. Any discussion? It says here we need to vote, but we already voted.
Yep.
So this is really just for information?
Oh, maybe we're supposed to vote in open session.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a?
Yeah, move to, to approve the town, move to implement the town manager's FY25 compensation with a 2.5% COLA and 3.9% merit for FY25.
Second.
Ms. Ackerman, any discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye, Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
And Ms. Ravelli?
Aye.
Thank you. Next order of business is public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes from each speaker on topics that are not on this week's agenda. Do I have any public comment?
You're not hearing well, it's not your fault.
It looks like Tracy Morano would like to speak.
Hi there, Tracy Morano. I'm on the school committee, but speaking on behalf of myself, 39 Cartridge Lane. I just wanted to mention that we had a really successful weekend at the schools this weekend. We had Kicks for Cancer Weekend and the Mighty Moose Race. I think the Mighty Moose had about 2,500 runners and Kicks for Cancer welcomed, oh gosh, thousands and thousands of people to our campus. So it was a wonderful weekend event, really big community event. 19 towns participate in the soccer. All of our sports teams participate, so I just wanted to make a note of that. Really great job to the Kicks for Cancer Committee and the Mighty Moose people. And over the past, since 2007, they're headed to hit their million dollar mark for fundraising, and that is all towards research, towards cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morano, and thanks for having a really great day. You had good weather, right?
It was literally perfect.
Yes.
I think that Mr. McKenna ran in the race. I think I did hear that. I wasn't able to.
That is true.
But I think he was the runner.
That is true.
Any other public comment? Mr. Sloan, Mr. Sloan, I'm gonna ask you for your public comment after the presentation by Chief Judge, the Fire Chief. Okay? Just wait.
Okay, no, no, just let me know.
Okay. Okay, okay, good. Any other public comment? Good. Well, if it's good or not, but let's just keep going. The consent agenda, does anyone want this one art, one item pulled off of the consent agenda? Good, so can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye, Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Ravelli?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next, go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
Town manager's appointment, move to appoint James A. Smith of 14 Evans Road to the Natural Resources Commission for a term to expire May 31st, 2027.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye, Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Ravelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is the town manager's report. Carrie, you wanna?
Thank you and good evening. There was a report distributed late this afternoon. I'm not sure if it has made its way to you or not. You can check your email after the meeting. I wanted to mention that we have a number of staff that are currently deployed helping with recovery efforts following Hurricane Helene. So we have two members who are part of the FEMA Region 1 Task Force. Erin McClosko, our Highway and Park Superintendent, and Walter Latta, our Assistant Fire Chief. They are both part of the Urban Search and Rescue Program, and they have been deployed since before the hurricane hit Florida. They are currently deployed in Haywood County, North Carolina, and we expect that they will be there at least for another week or so. At this time, with the second hurricane coming in, all 26 of FEMA's Task Force teams have been deployed and they are on their way down south. I also wanted to mention that we, for the first time in a number of years, were able to send two of our CMLP line workers to assist, and they are deployed in South Carolina. Rich Fadili and Matt McDonough are the two employees that were deployed on October 2nd. And actually, I'm not sure if I mentioned, they're in South Carolina, so we have some in North Carolina, some in South Carolina. They are both deployed through mutual aid, and for anybody who's interested, the agency that's calling for the assistance reimburses any responding community 100%. So we do, we know all of our crews are safe. They have been reporting into us regularly, and they are busy, working hard to help our fellow citizens in the southern part of the United States. I wanted to mention that I sent out something today. We appointed an interim Chief Information Officer, Amalia McCaffrey, who has been serving as our IT Operations Manager. This is really exciting to be able to have somebody in-house who is qualified to serve in an interim capacity and likely in a position, well-positioned to move up into what is a critical position in town. In the information that I distributed, I mentioned that Amalia has been a member of the Air Force for 25 years, and in her Air Force duty, she, she does a lot of the work, the same type of work that she does here for the town. So we're very pleased to have Amalia assume that role today. On September 25th, we had a state ethics training. We probably had maybe 30 people or so attend, both in person and through Zoom. We had David Gianotti, who is from the State Ethics Commission, present what really was a terrific program. I think it was, it was at least two hours. It seemed that it went by a lot faster than that. I thought the material was very good, and it seemed like people enjoyed being able to participate in that kind of training. Let's see. There is information in the report on the continued paving work that Public Works has been doing, and I did want to mention the area that they are moving into next, which I don't think we've talked about before. So next, they're moving into road reconstruction and paving on Channing Road, Temple Road, Isaac Davis Road, Red Court Lane, Ripley Hill Road, Bartlett Hill Road, Martin Road, and Westford Road, and this work will continue through November as long as the weather holds out. And one final item that I wanted to mention from the report is that we've finally been able to hire a nurse at the Council on Aging.
Okay.
This position has been vacant for quite a while. It is a part-time position, but the nurse at the COA provides lots of, lots of great service. She does a weekly blood pressure clinic, and she schedules and presents on wellness topics, and also is available to provide one-on-one health consultations. I would like to, if I could, take a few moments just to respond to a couple of the questions that came up at the RTE Forum, if that's okay, since we're, I think we're running ahead of schedule slightly. So the notes that I took from, from the Forum, there was some question on rentals, and specifically the number of rentals, and so I did have the opportunity to follow up with our tax assessor and ask why the discrepancy in the number of rentals. And one thing that she pointed out is that rental property that is not taxed, such as property that is owned by the Concord Housing Authority, would not be included in the numbers that she provided. But it does seem like there's still a bigger discrepancy, and so I'm continuing to try to understand why there might be differences in the numbers that are presented. But I did want to clarify one point that was made during, during some of the comments provided by one of the speakers, and that was the fact that rental property of three units or more, it was said, is taxed as commercial property, not rental property. So units that are rentals of three or more, they are valued as commercial property. They are assessed as commercial property, but for the purposes of the residential tax exemption, they are residential property, and that's why rental property is not exempt from the RTE, so I wanted to clarify that. We also received a question about the amount that was shifted, and so this is not, I think depending on how you interpret that question, it's not, it's not the easiest thing to respond to, so I wanted to just throw out some information. So we estimated that 4,000 exemptions would be granted, right? I think everybody remembers that, that number. So the value of 4,000 exemptions is about $7.5 million. And we know because it was presented that 3,702 exemptions were actually granted, and the, the cost of that was $6.95 million. And I think, well, actually, I'm not sure if this was presented or not, but in following up with the assessor, she identified that 3,263 exemptions were granted below the break-even, and that was $6.125 million. And 439 were granted above the break-even, and that was about $825,000. And I know she said the difference was about $500,000 between the estimate and what was granted. It's actually $559,000. So that was the, the amount collected over what we needed, because we had to make an estimate. So that, that amount will close to the overlay account, and then, and then the assessors can vote that as surplus, and then it can close to free cash, but. So digging into this a little deeper, everybody's, everybody's taxes, if, at the first level, everybody's taxes went up as a result of implementation of the RTE, because we had to raise that 6.9, or, excuse me, the $7.5 million. So that increase, the, the tax rate going from 1224 to 1313, that's a 7.27% increase. So at the first level, everybody's taxes went up. The starting point was plus 7.27. But then depending on whether or not you applied, and whether or not the RTE was granted, and, and for, for most people, if they applied, the RTE was granted, because there are very, very few exceptions for owner-occupied property. But obviously, the impact to you depended on whether you applied and whether it was granted. So I did go in and look, and I just pulled various data points. I pulled what I think is the lowest, the, the single-family home with the lowest assessed value in town, and if they received an RTE, their tax bill went down 61%, which is, is high, but from a dollar perspective, their tax bill went down $1,677, but that's 61%. If they did not receive the RTE, their tax bill went down 53.5% or $1,475. At the average assessed value, which is $1,430, plus or minus.
I'm not sure, I understand the first part of what you said.
Yeah.
If they received the RTE, it went down. How would their taxes go down if they didn't receive the RTE?
Because of the shift.
Yeah, I don't understand that either.
I don't understand that. So if they did not receive the RTE, there is no shift, right?
But be.
That's a good point. Because the taxes, you said taxes went up 7%.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm just saying, if they did not receive the RTE, there's no way their taxes went down, because the tax rate went up.
Right.
So if they did not receive the RTE, their taxes had to have gone up.
That's, that's true.
So the value of their house maybe went down?
No, no, that's, that's true. Sorry, I was.
No, that's fine, I mean, keep going, I just, I just, that one, that one just threw me, that's all. The first part I got, the first part I got, the second part I didn't understand, so maybe that's just.
All right, so at, at average assessed value, and again, this is $1,429,000. If they were eligible, their tax bill went down 3.45%. At the break-even, which is 2, 2.1 million, obviously, nothing, nothing happened as a result of the RTE. And then over the break-even range, the, the increase, and this is anything, anything 2.2 million to the highest assessed value for a single-family home was around $9.7 million. The increase was 7.57% to 12.95%. And now this is just due to the residential tax exemption. Obviously, there are, there are other increases because of the operating budget, because of additional exempt debt service. There could be changes in value due to market. There could be changes in value due to improvements somebody made to, to their home. But that, that, I, I hope that gets at the shift, but again, I think you can interpret the shift in, you know, what, what that means to you. I think you can interpret it many different ways. If, if there are additional questions that people have, please submit those, and we will take a look and try to provide an answer. The last thing that I wanted to say about the Forum is there were a lot of, a lot of great comments in, in support and, and opposed. I think people on both sides made great points. One thing that struck me is a number of people talked about the need to increase the commercial tax base, and of course, that is a goal of, of the Select Board. I think everybody shares that goal. I think what surprised me was that it seemed like some of the comments were, were directed, particularly at the Select Board, maybe at myself, for not doing more to increase the commercial tax base. And so I went back and I looked at the Charge of the Economic Vitality Committee, a committee that was established in 2019, really to, in my mind, to, to look at this particular issue. But I went back to the Charge because I wanted to make sure I wasn't thinking that the Charge was broader than it was, and it's clear in the Charge that, that part of the work is, is to get at increasing commercial tax base. Obviously, we hear, or I certainly hear on a pretty regular basis, one of the impediments to increasing the, the commercial tax base is the cost of the sewer improvement fee. I would say it's not the sewer improvement fee that is the reason we don't have increase in commercial tax base. It's, it's the fact that we don't have any sewer capacity to, to sell to anybody. Another thing that we hear about on a very regular basis is the lack of cell service, particularly what I hear about a lot is, is in the center. One of the best things that we could do to improve business in the center is to improve cell service, but really at every turn, we are met with some pretty staunch opposition from some corner about that. So I do wonder, given that we heard an interest in increasing supporting development in, in the commercial tax base, and it's a goal of this board, perhaps you might think about inviting the Economic Vitality Committee to come in. Perhaps our staff that work in this area, our economic vitality manager, our town planner, and have a conversation about the biggest impediments to development, further development of the commercial tax, tax base, and perhaps that's a good place to start. So I just wanted to offer that up to you.
Good idea, yeah.
I actually think, I've met with Mimi to do that, and I actually think it's a great idea, and also to level set us about vacancies, because I thought that there were a lot of vacancies. I don't think there's as many vacancies as I thought, but, you know, what are the struggles and what types of business are we having issues with?
Your mic is on, is it on?
Yes, it's on, yep.
Very good, are you done?
I am done.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Carrie. Next item is the Chair's report. I think the idea to invite the Economic Vitality Committee and our senior planner and our economic development manager, as well as Meg and our deputy manager, would be great. In fact, I have them penciled in for December 16th. The other things I wanted to mention as upcoming topics for Select Board meetings will be, our next meeting on October 21st, I'd like to review our FY25 goals. I'm in light of progress that we've made, and also in light of feedback I hope to get from the town manager, remembering that we need town support to meet our goals, and the feedback we get from the town manager as far as, are these aligned with the senior management team goals, and what obstacles, what might be in the way that we didn't foresee. So let's take another look at our goals and see if they need to be adjusted somewhat. The other thing we've got upcoming is on December 2nd, I'm hoping that we'll have feedback from the comments we've requested from other boards and committee chairs around the liaison assignments that we have. Andrea's done a great job of sending out a request with a survey to all the boards and committees chairs. We've gotten some good feedback, I'll mention it again, at the Chair's Breakfast, but I think it would be good for us to spend a few minutes going over what we're hearing from them as far as how best we can support them to do the work that they're doing on our behalf. And finally, I'll mention that we're continuing to work on policy for the pilot agreement, again, one of the Select Board's goals. We've got a draft of a policy, and we hope to bring that to you. I forget when. November 4th, thank you, Anthony. November 4th, we will bring a draft of a pilot agreement to you on November 4th. So that's what's coming up in the next few meetings. Any questions, anybody have on that?
I will just mention that those are all good ideas. One of my liaison groups this week, there seemed to be a lot of confusion between staff support and Select Board liaison. They were kind of conflating them into one person, and so I'm working on clearing that up.
Great, thank you, thank you. That's, I didn't see that, but.
No, no, it's just something.
Now that I think about it, you're right, that would happen. Okay, good, thank you, Terry. Okay, moving right along, Select Board Liaison Reports. Who would like to go first?
Well, I can.
Don't all jump up.
I can, because it's very short, very short, really. Another thing that's coming up, I think, in our next meeting is the 2229 Main Street. I think they're coming in very briefly to just give an update.
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Terry, because I forgot to mention that at that particular budget update, I think what I'd like to ask them to do is to focus on the biggest line item in their budget, which is public.
Wait, wait, I'm talking about the 2229 meeting?
Oh, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, wrong, wrong.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay, so Paul, the Chair, Paul Bohm, the chairman, will be coming to give a brief update. They're basically finished, 2229 Main Street.
2229 Main, good.
They're basically finished, they're gonna give an update, but.
Did they vote?
Yes, they, they have a bottom-line vote.
Great.
And the report, however, there's a lot of appendices to assemble and editing to do. So they're gonna be asking for an extension to December or January, whatever, to finish the report.
Fine.
And now, the 250th, that's my other one, okay.
Sorry.
Do you want to go first, or?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. There will be, starting next week, I think, on the website, a donation button, which will be really great, because we did vote to set up a way that people can donate to the 250th, so now you just click. It's gonna be easy. And there's a really exciting event this Friday at the Wright Tavern commemorating the First Provincial Congress of October 11th, 1774. So that's it, really.
Oh, I have, so I have something else to say about that.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So when they come in for their budget update, we might remember that the largest item on their budget is public safety. So Carrie suggested that we bring in the people that are, you know, looking at public safety in concert with our own police chief and get an update on things that are happening there, and, and what people can expect, some changes that people can expect.
That's a great idea.
Happening in town.
Especially the transportation and.
So people aren't surprised, so that we get a feel for, you know, what's, what to expect, and that we reassure people that we're planning and thinking of this way ahead. So that will be, that will be part of the.
You are inviting all those people, or do you want me to?
No, I think, yes, we will.
Okay.
We will.
Carrie, well, okay, great.
Great, okay, good. You done? Great, okay.
All right, yeah, I'll give a couple updates. One was, I forgot in my last report that we had a financial audit advisory committee, which, that's the committee that I'm chairing. We had recently completed the audit of the region, financial audits, and everything's in good shape, and we're gonna send a report off to the school committee of their FY23 audit. I also just want to note that this committee will be receiving a letter from the financial audit committee related to the town's FY23 audit, and so I've asked Mary to put that on the agenda for a future meeting, so you can expect that, that'll be forthcoming. In terms of the planning board, I just had one quick update. I reported last, I don't know, last week, that the Affordable Homes Act had set some changes for ADU, ADU zoning, there's a state law that changes some ADU rules, and they had changed the size of ADU by right up to 900.
What's ADU again?
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling, sometimes they stress. So our current size limit is. So our current size limit is 750 square feet, and you can get a special permit for up to 1,000 square feet. The state law is going to make it 900 square feet, starting in February. The planning board discussed, you know, do we still need a special permit or not? And what they decided to do is vote to move forward with actually making our by-right size 1,000 square feet. So that'll be part of the town meeting, Warren article.
So, sorry, is that indifferent from the state, or is the state a minimum of 900?
No, so what happened in August is that a law was passed that statewide, the ADU allowed by right size is going to be up to 900 square feet.
Right.
Ours is currently 750.
Right. But you just said it's going to go to 1,000.
So what the planning board...
So why is it, why are we doing different from the state? I guess it's just...
Because we also have a rule that allows a resident to apply for a special permit for up to 1,000 square feet. So the question is, well, if it's already going to go up to 900, why do we, do we need to maintain a special permit?
Right.
And really, what's another 100 square feet? And it's, you know, administratively for the ZBA, et cetera, it's cumbersome.
Right.
And so what's, you know, why don't we just increase the limit? And the argument being, if it's 1,000 square feet, you know, it does give you the option of probably putting a two-bedroom ADU in, which does help with our housing diversity. So, the planning board voted to support 1,000 square foot.
This is going to be a Warren article.
This would be a Warren article.
This is Warren article.
Okay. Got it.
So that's... The other, I just remember, one of our goals for the Select Board was having, looking at parking regulations. So, planning board is starting to look at the parking bylaws. They're going to start looking at the residential rules and regulations. They're going to be talking about that later this month. And then they'll also be looking at joint parking requirements later in the month of November. So, just want to let this board know that we are working on that, and they're working with a consultant who's helping to advise what's industry standard, and really just taking a hard look at what we do today, to make sure it's consistent.
I don't know if we articulated this specifically in our goals, but I think, at least, my recollection is that we wanted to focus on business, parking in the commercial areas, because it's another way, again, to promote commercial development, because I'm hearing stories that parking is one of the reasons why people are reluctant to move in, businesses are. So, I wonder if you could...
Yeah, no, I'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
So, one of the things they're looking at, at least on residential and probably with business, is similar to the ADU state law that went through, looking at more relief from parking, particularly if you're closer to mass transportation.
Yes, yes.
So they are looking at all that.
Good.
So, more to follow.
Okay.
On that one. And then the other, just two quick things on the Climate Action Committee. They are starting to look at a proposed new town policy around new building construction to require buildings be constructed with solar on them, or at least solar-ready. So that was a recommendation that came out of the Solar Task Force last year. So, that is a discussion that's happening with the Climate Action Committee, and we'll bring it back to this committee when it's ready.
Wow.
So, moving forward. And the other thing I just want to point out, there actually was some good collaboration between the Climate Action Committee and the Transportation Advisory Committee. The Transportation Advisory Committee is looking for the climate committee's support in assessing environmental impacts of any traffic recommendations that they're coming forward with. So, nice to see that collaboration between committees, so.
Really.
Thank you for remembering that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Wendy.
Sure.
Cameron.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So, one, following up, Carrie, you had mentioned something about the, you know, kind of the wastewater, and we got into that a little bit. So just a little bit more data or sort of investigation into kind of the fee structure, right, for some of the businesses. So, as I understand it, the fee today is about $40 per gallon, in terms of, when we talk about the, you know, the sort of connection fee. So just to put that into some context, if you had 1,250 gallons at about 110 gallons per bedroom, an 11-bedroom structure would cost about $50,000. So as far as like the fee for a, you know, connection. Now, what I don't know is exactly how that translates from a commercial standpoint, right, in terms of restaurant capacity, as an example. So still doing a little bit more digging. But just to sort of provide some context, that's a pretty good size, an 11-bedroom structure for about $50,000. So, my understanding, again, and this is approximate, right, because this isn't exact dollars, but it's roughly about half of like what we, for instance, in looking at the costs of like the MCI wastewater treatment plant, and what it might take to sort of maintain and operate and upgrade that, some initial projections, more like $80 a gallon. So, the fee, in other words, is not even necessarily, it's not an exact science, it depends on the situation, right? The fee, my point is, is not, it's not like the fee is more than covering the cost, it's probably under recovering, you know, some of those costs. So now, again, I don't know exactly how that translates into restaurant and sort of business capacity, because there's some different formulas there.
Right.
Right, so I don't want to sort of extrapolate over to everything. But it just, it comes back to the issue that the real challenge here, that I see us starting to bump up against, is just the overall capacity, right? And, you know, the capacity also to like take, as we're pulling in like housing projects and things like that, I mean, that competes with the business capacity, right? So like, hey, it just, it calls out to me too, more of like, how do we make sure we have some plans around like, and I'm not saying there aren't any plans, but just plans around like, what is our development looking like, right? And what is it sort of, as we move forward? Because there's only so much capacity here, and if we look at what we need to do, you know, what are some of the, you know, what's the sort of holistic look there in terms of, you know? Now, it's going to get a little more complicated when we start talking about MCI and the wastewater treatment plan, and what we might be able to take over there. But how much of that will be incremental capacity, incremental to any development that is going to be proposed there, right? So, I think it all just says, look, we have some capacity issues, we have some challenges there. It is something we're going to have to look at, I think, holistically, between, you know, housing development, commercial development, what we're doing at MCI and that development, and making sure that we're sort of looking at that together. Because if we say, hey, like, let's go develop more housing, and then you say, well, wait, but now we don't have enough capacity to bring in more business, right? So we're going to have to look at some of that trade-off. So, that was just a little bit more digging with kind of Public Works, and, you know, just kind of following up on some of that.
Right, thank you.
Really, the only other thing for me to mention is just, I know in the, I forget, was it even the last meeting that we talked about flag policy? Wendy, you weren't here. Okay. So just, Wendy was out of town, Wendy's back in town, the Flag Subcommittee is going to sort of get rocking and rolling here again, and we will, you know, start to reconvene and have some follow-up on that. So, Mary, we'll come back to you as the chair to say, hey, here's when we think we could get back on the agenda.
Great, I'll wait to hear. Mark, did you, you also had something to send to Wendy and Cameron, the Subcommittee? Yep?
Yeah, do you want, if Cameron's done, I'll pick up right there.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, my takeaway from our last discussion about the flag policy was that it would be helpful if I had written up a proposal for a policy update related specifically to the light holders. And I have done that, and right now, it's out with the town manager and senior staff to just make sure that they feel it's implementable, and I'll be happy to provide that to the Subcommittee. So, it'd be great to hear your input on that as well. And then we would be prepared to go forward with another discussion on that.
Okay.
So hopefully.
You'll speak soon.
We were just really waiting to hear from the light plant director and the public works director, and make sure that they're...
Yep. No, that's fine. I mean, we'll get another meeting scheduled, and we'll make sure that, you know, we get whatever input people want to provide, so.
Great. So are you done, Cameron?
Yes. I'm done.
Yep.
Mark, what else do you have? Anything?
Okay, yeah, well, the MCI Advisory Board is going to be here in a few minutes, so I'm going to skip over that. I did attend the Ethics Workshop, and I thought that was very good. And it's, I've noticed it's online for, on the YouTube channel, so anybody that's interested in the topic of ethics, or thinks they might have an issue, that they want to understand how they could get more information about whether it's an issue, I would encourage them to do that. They're Gieranti left, you know, gave a lot of pointers to how to get some of these questions resolved, and it was appreciated. Also, the RTE Forum, obviously, I was in that as well. I'll just mention quickly, the Warner's Pond Task Force met on the 26th. The Short Term Actions subgroup, which I'm a member of, presented our preliminary proposal, and it was pretty well-received, and there'll be additional work coming soon on that. But I think we're beginning to make progress towards bringing some of these potential solutions in focus. So that's, that's good for me, because like I said, we're going to talk about MCI in more detail later.
Great. Okay, I have three updates. One was the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. They're putting together a Concord needs assessment in order to qualify for the Homes Consortium, which gives Concord not a lot of money, but it does enable contractors to have access to the Homes Consortium funds, so it makes us more attractive to developers. I didn't get the sense that the, this needs assessment is really what we were looking for, I think, at some conversation we had as far as what are Concord's needs for affordable housing. This is really tailored to what the Homes Consortium is looking at. But it's a start, so there's some data there that I think will be helpful to us. The other thing I just wanted to remind people of is all the building we have in the pipeline. We've got 200-plus units at the Novo, we have 200-plus units at Thoreau Residences, we have four to six units that are possible at the 91B parcel, that's state-excess land over on the corner of Main Street and Route 2. We've got Junction Village, which we know at one point, we had a proposal for 83 units there. I don't know what will happen, given that it's contiguous with MCI, but that's a parcel dedicated to affordable housing. And Aspet Bluff has five units that will come online. So we've got quite a bit of affordable housing in the pipeline. I just want to point out that it's all in West Concord. So maybe it's time that we kind of move some of our affordable housing into the other side of Route 2. Possibilities for housing, that we don't have anything definitive, and yet their possibilities would be the MCI site, obviously, PBD School, and 2229 Main Street, again, all on West Concord. The CPC site visit happened on Saturday. We looked at three Community Preservation Committee site visits took place, which are always fun, on Saturday. We visited first the library, who has an application in for some help archiving old assessors' records. We went to the Thoreau Elementary School to look at their application for some help renovating the grounds specifically to install some playing fields, and these would be regulation playing fields, so this would help with our recreation needs as well. And then finally, we went to Jarrow to look at a proposal there for a feasibility study for a boat launch. And then finally, I represented the Board of Select, the Select Board at the League of Women Voters Forum on October 2nd, where they hosted a panel discussion with the Select Board, the school committee, Warner's Pond, and 2229 Main. And that was actually quite fun. It was a great forum, good questions. It's an easy audience, very engaged people, very intelligent people, and I just am grateful to the League for all of, all they do to keep us all informed. So, with that, I think we're done, and we can move to, what's next? Oh, town manager's goals. Carrie?
I'm still looking at my spreadsheet from the RTE.
I know, you're going to, you're going to, you're not going to sleep until you get that.
No, no, I, I see. So I did promise I would print out some full-size. So I did print out some full-size.
I have this teeny-weeny one out here.
Yeah.
By the way, I think it's looking really good. Really, really good.
Hoping we're going to have them approved before the end of the fiscal year.
We could do that.
Okay. So what I'm passing around is what I sent you previously, but I also reprinted the memo that was in the pack at the last time, because we didn't have a chance to go through that.
Yeah, that's right.
I wanted to say, there's just one or two edits that were made since you saw it the last time, and I'll point those out.
Okay, what are the edits?
All right, so if I could just, just spend a minute to update you on what's happened since we talked about this the last. You have provided one or two rounds of comments based on the different versions, those have been incorporated. One question I keep, or one piece of feedback I keep receiving is a request to include specific goals in my list that I have not included, because they are, they are part of the Select Board goals, and I think it makes more sense to put those tasks when we update the Select Board goals. So for instance, there was a request to, about land use, the land use matrix.
Yes, that was me.
To me, that's, that's a Select Board goal. It doesn't mean it's not a town manager, town staff goal, but it was identified by the Select Board, and I'm trying not to repeat, right?
I think that's a really good point, and I really like this format, and I also like, Mary, that we're going to be doing the Select Board Goals update next week. And I'm wondering if that update will be somehow in this format, so then we could like really compare.
Yeah, that is, that is the hope.
What?
So...
Just to, the Select Board goals to be in this kind of a format.
Actually, I was thinking that we, that we would do that. And we've actually, at a staff level, at one point several weeks ago, I provided your goals in this format, because this is a format that I'm using to work with departments to identify the work that they are doing in the current fiscal year that is in support either of town manager goals or Select Board goals.
Great. Okay, okay, I'm not tracking, so I need to get on the board here. So you want, what do you, say that again?
So, the Select Board, I have translated, if you will, Select Board goals into this format, and that was...
You've already done that.
Yes. And that was previously distributed. And we can, when...
To the senior management team?
Yes.
Okay, we didn't see it.
Yeah, I don't think we have, but that's okay. We'll do it next time.
Yeah, that's not a problem. It's not a problem.
So when, when it's time to do an update of Select Board goals...
You'll have it already.
It will be presented in this format, and you will see work that the different departments are doing in support of your goals.
Fantastic.
That they had just serendipitously decided to do this year in support of your goals. And moving forward, we'll get closer to having this done and open the fiscal year with something like this versus working on it. But I do think that the work here is going to pay off.
Carrie, I just want to be clear, though, that when we do that exercise, and we're looking at the Select Board goals in this format, that shows the work that the senior management team and their departments are doing in support, that we're also going to have visibility to some of our goals that in fact have barriers that we didn't see, that we might need to revisit.
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and the one specific one that I think keeps coming up is the request to update the West Concord Master Plan, which we don't have a budget for, and that's not something that we typically would do in-house 100%. So that would be identified as a potential barrier.
Maybe parking as well. Well, we'll see. We'll see.
Yeah.
We'll see. Okay.
So, the, now that I think about it, I think the only adjustment I made to this since you saw it is, under the diversity, equity, and inclusion goal, one of the items was to update internal policies, and there was a reference to, so it says...
13?
Right, there was, there was a reference to fraud, and the Chair asked, flagged that as something that didn't make sense. I think what happened there is, this policy update was actually... I think what happened there is this policy update was actually somewhere else, and, you know, one, we're, we're also looking to, we're always looking to address areas of, that we are vulnerable, that we are open to fraud. And I wasn't trying to, so I just took that out because I couldn't figure out where else to put it. I wasn't trying to, to make any statement that, that in this particular area, we're, we're looking at.
Exactly, right.
At fraud, but that's, that is across, across the board.
Can I ask a question about that DEI? It says, it refers twice to a strategic plan.
Yes.
And is this a strategic plan for DEI, or is it the same strategic plan that you're talking about in number one, where we're doing strategic planning?
Well, they're, they're two different things. So we had, a few years back, we had a needs assessment done by a DEI consultant that identified work that we needed to do. The strategic plan, in the sense here, under this, this goal, number 12, is implementation of that needs assessment. So it's a, it's a work plan to implement the needs assessment.
Right, that's what I figured. I just, it was just a little confusing using the same term.
So it's a need.
So finalize a strategic plan for the needs assessment.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I think this is good. I would, in fact, beef up the effective, under effective transparent governance, the communication to the town. I'm looking at, under results here, a well-informed public that is satisfied with the tax dollar value received. I mean, I think that's a great goal, how we're gonna do it. Bi-week, Canadian Town Manager, I think I'd, I'd like to see more there as far as how we're going to achieve that goal. We talked about that.
Yeah.
I mean, the bi-weekly communication is good. I think we could do more.
Carrie, are you looking for specifics in response to this?
That's a good question.
Or are we gonna go through each one of these?
Yeah, yeah.
I have some specific comments, but I just wasn't sure how you wanted to.
I wasn't, I wasn't planning to go through this line by line, but I'm happy to take additional comments.
So part of this was, having just gone through your review and recognizing that, what I really appreciate about this format is it does be very crystal clear about the fiscal year-end expectations and what we're really gonna achieve, because we have to be careful about what's multi-year and what's not.
Yeah.
And, you know, my comments are more in, in that vein of being really crystal clear about what's going to be achieved. One of the, this is just a comment, I'm not asking you to change it. In the first one around strategic plans, I guess my question was, which plans are we talking about in there? So maybe that's just a comment. I'd like to just be clear. I, I think I can guess, but I don't want to assume. And then the other, so I'm looking at my notes, my little teeny plan. This one around, this, the, the second one, which is the, the working group around the MWRA. My comment there is, is not that it's not a bad goal, it's just that I don't know if we're in control of it. So when I think about your goals and what you can achieve, I think it's an important goal. I just, we're not in control of what's gonna happen with that work group. So I just, I'm just, as a goal, from your compensation, I'm like, this is something you're not completely in control of. So it's just an observation, it's just a comment. I know we have to participate, we want to keep going. This is a multi-year one, too, right?
Yeah.
It's 20 years before we make that decision.
Yeah, so the, the thought here is that the group is meeting as needed to keep, keep the goal.
Keep it going.
Keep, keep the initiative going forward. I think there is some work that we can do with neighboring communities, because if, if you sat in on, on any of those discussions, you know that if we join MWRA, water, the, the pipeline can come from a couple of different directions, and we'd like to understand who our best partners are here and where, who would be ready to act at the same time. And, and so there are conversations that we have a little more control over, but obviously this thing is only moving as fast as MWRA is, is ready to move it.
No, and I appreciate that, that's helpful. One, one comment I had around this, which one is it? I don't have a reference number. So under effective and transparent government, the first one. This is, is this a tool that you're potentially implementing, this automated agenda system?
It is.
So it is dependent on implementation of a tool, right?
Yes.
So just so, so we're clear on the goal, and it seems pretty clear that you can certainly get through the evaluation of the system and making a recommendation. I just want us to be clear that if the funding isn't there, you know, at the end of the year, you may not have been able to implement because funding wasn't there. So, and I think you say that in here, we just need to be clear, because again, I'm thinking, you know, when we have to do your evaluation, I don't want us to assume that you're doing it because if the budget isn't there, that's not there. So it's, it's very clear that you'll get the evaluation and the recommendation done this year, right? And then we'll do as much as we can, depending on funding.
Good.
Right? And then the one right below that, working with CMLP and the director, in terms of this, this is the scope of responsibility, right? I guess my, my comment here is, this sounds like we're creating a work group to work through the issues. Can we be clear whether we're actually gonna have the recommendation by June 25? Can we add that?
Which one are you on, Wendy?
So, right below.
Number eight.
The one relative to CMLP.
Okay.
And I know what it's gonna take, I just.
Yeah. So I, I did, there, it's interesting, the ones that you're, that you're commenting on were the ones that I found the hardest to identify what the, what the fiscal year expectation was. With this one specifically, I was trying to capture that in, where I said, either an interim recommendation or a permanent recommendation. And, and what I mean here is, this issue of governance with CMLP has been kicking around since the early 90s, and it has come up periodically. And there's, there's a lot of work that has been done in this area, and, and interestingly enough, there's not a lot of change in, in the law or the case law, the governing. So the fact that there have been few changes, but the community has been unable to resolve the issue means it's, it's a tough issue. What I would, what I would like to see, and what I think is perfectly reasonable, is at least an interim resolution, so that we, we might document and try something different and see if that works for a period of time before we make a permanent change, because the permanent change could mean anything, you know, from a written agreement up to changing the charter, right? So it, it, depending on, on what the solution is.
Okay. So maybe it really is interim. It's, something will be.
So maybe it should just say interim and cross out permanent.
Yeah, I mean, because I guess where I was going is it could get really big, it could change the end of the CMLP Board, et cetera.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds great. And then, I guess I have one more, and I gotta figure out what it was. So two down from there, which was the.
The website?
Yeah, the website. Yeah, I just, it seemed, I was unclear whether we thought we'd get the whole website done. And again, this seems like a tool that you're gonna implement, well, it's probably your existing tool. But I wonder if really, at a, at a minimum, what you're gonna say is that you're gonna establish guidelines for the website, because I'm assuming the whole thing won't be done by June, right? Staff are gonna work on it, but I wasn't expecting you'd get it all done necessarily, but.
So the, the intention is, we're working, continuing to work with Civic Plus, which is, is our existing vendor. They have a lot of functionality that we feel would be beneficial, that we have yet to implement. I'm, I'm making a note here, and I'm happy to further refine what the expectations are in, in terms of what we might reasonably accomplish in, in the year versus what, what's longer. It's, it's, it's not like any one of these things can't be done. It's, it's obviously a matter of what other things come up, and, you know.
Well, and I guess, you know, to that point, that's why you review your goals, because stuff happens, right?
Yeah.
And it should be reasonable that we would modify these, modify them to a year.
Yeah. And I know this is Cameron, this is one that you had mentioned to me as well as.
Any other comments?
So I had a, a few as well, and again, I really like this format. I think it's really, really helpful. I learned a lot, like I didn't realize that you had been working on implementing a merit pay plan again, and, because I know we used to have one. And so that was great. And so, in number one, in the fiscal year expectation, the last sentence says, "Town opens FY '26 with one set of goals by the Select Board." I think that's what, yeah. What, what do you mean, are you talking about in July? Or, and, or that the Select Board does its goals in April and May to be ready for July? Or like, this is sort of a joint conversation that we all need to have, especially this year with town meeting being so late, and by the time we have a new chair and a new board, and I won't be part of it anymore, but still, I don't know how we open the year, but I think that it's a really important thing to get established, and I would like that we could be talking about it before July.
It's a big deal. It is.
It is, and it's a great goal to get everything lined up. For example, what you're doing with taking the Select Board Goals and then taking it to the SMT, that's perfect. That's, I think, what we should be doing every year. But in order to do that, the Select Board needs to be ready early.
Yep.
So when you say, "Town opens FY '26 with one set of goals," are you thinking about that it gets started in the spring, or that, what do you mean, we open '26?
That we know on July 1st of 2025 what, what the Select Board goals are.
Okay.
So those can be shared with boards, the boards and committees, and with departments, so that everybody can start aligning the work that they will do with those goals.
Okay, so maybe you should say, just that exactly, like, "Select Board Goals are finished by," you know, of course, that's our, that's our problem, but, okay. That just confused me, that sentence, okay. And then my other comment was in number six. An updated methodology has been developed and presented. So when I was first reading this, I thought, oh, you've done that already? But no, I think what you're saying is, by the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
You will have developed and presented this methodology. And do you mean it will be developed and presented, or do you mean it will be implemented by all the departments?
Developed, presented, and implemented.
Oh, okay, so it's not just that Anthony meets with the department heads, it's that it's really implemented?
Yeah, so we do have a charge-back methodology. We will be talking to you about that when we present the budget, because I, I do think there's a, maybe a misunderstanding that we don't have a charge-back policy for indirect costs for enterprise and, and other funds. We do. It needs to be updated.
Right.
To reflect organizational changes. So some of the charge-backs are based on reporting structure. You know, if, if, if I'm, well, I'm not a good example. If, if Megan, for instance, is overseeing a certain activity from one of the enterprise funds, a certain percentage of her salary would, would be assigned. We have made, as, as you know, we've made a lot of organizational changes, so we haven't, we don't have those changes completely reflected in the charge-back methodology. There may be other improvements we have made to process that mean something is less costly than it, it used to be, so we need to update that.
Great. So, so you're actually saying that this updated methodology, you're hoping your goal is to have it implemented, not just presented?
Yes, so we will update it as a part of developing the fiscal '26 budget, and we'll be implementing it in FY '26.
Wonderful.
Okay. Do you have anything?
Uh, two, two comments. So one, I think, I think this is significantly improved, so thank you. I think it's coming together really nicely. I think when I compare it to sort of last year, this year, and to first drafts, you know, we can't let sort of perfect be the enemy of good, so I think this is really good. I don't have any specific comments on, you know, in that spirit, I don't have any specific comments on what's written. I, I do want to make sort of maybe a plug on the, on the financial stuff. I would, in addition to the capital, I would love to see us kind of benchmark, you know, what are, what are we spending today? You know, what, what are, how does it look like, you know, with other towns? How does it look like, like, you know, in terms of departments? And so I, I do know that that's also something we, you know, you could work with your CFO on, you know, as well, you know, but, so I, I think for me, like, you know, we're, we're gonna continue to have a lot of fiscal pressures, right? There's gonna be a lot of projects that are gonna be coming down the pike. We just talked about things like sewage capacity as an example, right? We know there's public works, we know there's all these things, they're gonna put cost pressures on us. I'd love to see us holistically looking at both the capital side as well as the operating side, right? And I know it's not, it's, it's, there's the whole budget, and the whole town budget more broadly includes the schools and all that stuff. But I'd love to see us looking at, you know, what we're spending, where we're spending it, how it compares to, you know, some other, other towns, and where there might be opportunities.
Can I just say, when I was on the Finance Committee, there was a Finance Committee member who was very big on benchmarking, and it sounded like a great idea, right? First of all, it's hard to find benchmarking, and then when you go in and you look at the benchmarking, you realize, oh, well, they don't count this, and we do. You know what I'm saying? So we spend more time trying to.
Yep, I think that's a fair point, and I've spent a lot of time, like, yes.
You know what I mean?
Yes.
And, and.
Direct, so.
At the end of it, and I'll tell you, the bottom line is, we spend more almost everywhere, okay?
Yeah.
Than any other town. Okay, so, I, I think you can say that's a safe guess.
In the spirit of, right.
That benchmarking will make us either one of the top or the top three in almost any area. So I guess I'm a little bit jaded about spending a lot of time on benchmarking, I would rather take the energy on, on, on making more efficient, having more.
Well, so, in the spirit, I don't, I, I agree. Benchmarking is a means to an end, right? It is not, shouldn't be the thing.
Okay, so let's talk about the end.
Yes.
Where do you want to go with that?
We, we need to find ways to be more efficient, we need to find ways to, like, manage the cost pressures that I think are gonna continue to, to, you know, be put on us as the town, given the things that we are trying to do, right? Given the demands.
Can I propose something, that we ask other budgeting, FinCom or other, the budgeting entities to bring benchmarking data to us?
Sure.
Or to town meeting, rather than us having to go out and do the benchmarking work ourselves?
Yeah, that's great.
You know, that's one, one idea I have. But, you know, the truth be told is that spending is decided by the people who show up at town meeting. So let's keep that in mind and make sure that we don't put all the responsibility for spending upon staff or even boards and committees.
Yeah, so how do we, how would we do that constructively? Yeah.
Right, one of the ways might be asking committees or, you know, other depart, others, especially like the school committee, or other departments to come in and benchmark themselves.
The Finance Committee has asked everyone to bring benchmarking data as a part of their guidelines request, so we're planning to do that.
Oh, good, good, well, there you go.
Yeah, so, so again, I, I don't know that it necessarily needs to add to this list, but I do think it is some, because when I see the capital project things, I'm just wanting to tie in the whole picture.
Okay.
Right, so.
Yeah. You know, I think anything we do in finance, everything is based on assumptions, and we document our assumptions. And so we have, we're back to using ClearGov as, as a platform. ClearGov is the. ClearGov is the, the vendor that we used in the past that had the benchmarking data. They pull, I think they still pull information from all of the communities based on the standardized reports that they submit to the Department of Revenue. And they, they use that. That is one place to start. There are any number of reasons why our public works costs are not like Lexington and Acton.
Exactly, see, that's where it just, it revolves.
But it's, it, it's a place to start discussion and we can make assumptions based on, or we can talk about why, why there, there are differences. But it's, and, and people can take what they will. I, I agree, we spend more money than, than a lot of other communities. We're also much better positioned in terms of funding long-term liabilities than, than other communities. And that's one reason why our spending is higher. Because we are, we are, are taking the opportunity to, to make those funding choices. But we, we will be providing something to, to meet the FinCom request this year.
We have a constituency that demands a certain level of services. That's, when we see that, everything at town meeting gets approved. I think that, that's a testament to that. Mark, I'm sorry, do you have anything to say? We have a few minutes left on the goals.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment, and it's not specific to any of the particular goals, but more about the process and particularly the timing of the process. It seems to me that, that we will struggle, given the, the realities of the, of the election calendar when the, the, the select board gets, gets seated and, and those organizational calendar things, including town meeting, to make this goal-setting process actually fit into a fiscal year. And I think that it's worth having a conversation about whether or not we should overtly change that. I mean, in many ways, in many organizations, the goal priorities are implemented through the budgeting. And the budgeting is created in the fall, in our case, and, and really established in the spring. And so I think as we, I like the fact that this is defined in terms of themes and that some of those themes can extend across multiple years. And we can talk in more specifics about what progress is going to be made against those themes. And I'd encourage us to build on that and really, you know, think about whether or not it's actually necessary to tie the evaluation of progress against the goals to the fiscal year just because it's July 1, rather than actually figuring out when we are in the best position to know what have we accomplished in the last 12 months? And how do we set or adjust our goals for the next period?
I think that's a really good point. And I'm going to wonder if we could talk about that when we go over our select board goals at the next meeting? Because maybe that's one of our goals, to reorient that part of our calendar so we can do goal setting in, I don't know, January or whatever works.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like what's, what's typically happened is goal-setting tends to happen right around now when we're doing it. But we always feel like we're late. But why don't we just admit that it, it happens in the fall? And then set ourselves up to evaluate how we did against them, maybe in, you know, during the summer and then figure out how the evaluation processes that are tied to it and the budget-setting processes can connect to that.
Right.
Sort of optimize around that, we can both be on time and also be effective.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great point, Mark. And so Mary, I guess we're going to, what, did you say we're talking about select board goals?
We are, but I wasn't considering adding goals to the select board goals, so.
That wasn't a select board goal, though?
I'm not really talking about adding any goals. What I'm talking about is, is being realistic about when we're in a position to evaluate how we did against our goals. And then read out when, you know, how the town manager did. And then, you know, apply those, those achievements or, or issues to the planning process. So, I mean, ideally, what we want in terms of goals should feed into budget priorities. And budgets are, will begin to be built in a couple of months. And so I think we, you know, we might want to think about, is it possible to optimize around that so that the goals are known at the right timing to create budgets, which should then implement those goals with the expectation that, you know, 12 or 14 months down the road, those goals are going to be accomplished.
Okay, we can talk about that.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a new goal, I think we already had it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's mostly just, is our ability to tweak the schedule.
Right.
So are we in a position, based on our conversation tonight and some of the feedback that we've given to Carrie, realizing that we're going to be looking at our, reevaluating our goals, to approve these?
Yes. Yeah, I think this is the third time.
Right.
And, and it's really come a long way. I'm, I'm ready to go.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the town manager's goals.
With, with any of the comments that we made tonight or just as written?
Well, are we, and we'll update them anyways, right, with progress? So I, I'll just move that we move the town manager's goals based on our discussion tonight.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Good. Mark, you want to take a roll?
Yeah, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye, Mr. McKinnon?
Aye.
Ms. Revelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie, really good job on that.
Good progress.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I don't see Chief Judge here. Is he going to be online?
He is online.
He's both. He's online and here. Wow.
He's here.
He's both.
He's everywhere.
Here they come. I can hear the floor shaking.
I didn't think they were coming to our meeting.
Good evening.
Wow, the whole team here.
Do I need to unmute? So I'm set up to present on Zoom, is that how you want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
That would be great, thank you.
Tom Judge, I'm the fire chief. With me is Assistant Fire Chief Brian Whitney, Lieutenant Peter Rostrowski, and Dr. Ryan Kringle, our medical director.
Chief, can I just interrupt for just a minute?
Yes.
For the audience, we're, we have this item on our agenda tonight because the town, the select board wants to review the ARPA spending that the town manager has put forward. And we have one outstanding item, which is the ARPA spending in support of this proposal. So we want to hear your proposal tonight so we can move ahead with that.
Great, thank you. And thank you for inviting us. See if I can make this work a little bit smoother than I did with the finance committee. So I cannot start screen sharing while another participant is sharing. There we go. All right, so.
There you go.
It's the same slide deck that we used with the finance committee.
Yep.
But we did, we're, we're going to, we're going to skip over some slides because I know that, you know, it was, it was painfully detailed in some places. We really took a deep dive. So this is really going to be a much higher level overview. And I kept it the same slide deck primarily because it's a public record and I didn't want to have multiple versions. So I'll let you know when I'm skipping. So very quickly, the, the things that we're going to cover, this was the agenda. You know, why is it important? Why is the change important? The brief history, the difference between BLS and ALS. Dr. Kringle is going to explain that. I'm going to skip over what happens when someone calls 911. We will talk about the ALS proposal and then some of the questions that, that we received in advance and were able to provide answers to. And then we'll wrap it up. So just very quickly, the, I, I presented this slide a couple of weeks ago. This is, this is an article from the Seacoast Online News in New Hampshire from about a month ago. Yeah, it's just about a month ago. And Exeter Hospital is going through right now what Emerson Hospital went through in the early 2000s when they, when they ended their paramedic program. So I threw this slide in with a link to the article because it was, it was kind of some remarkable similarities between what happened to that, what's happening to them now and what happened to, to this area that prompted us to, to need a third-party provider for ALS back in, back in the earlier 2000s. I'm going to skip a lot of the details here, but just for the sake of context, Concord Fire Department has been the EMS provider for the town of Concord since 1951. And that includes, after the inception of ALS, we're still the provider, but the, the method of providing it has essentially been subcontracting. So what we're doing moving forward is we're going to stop subcontracting and just provide the service ourself. How did we get here to the point today where we need to make this change? We had a very successful program with the SAMARA, the, the group that was formed by the, by the communities in the Emerson catchment area. That's a term that I learned through all of this. And that group, when it was formed, it contracted with, with Pro EMS from Cambridge to be the provider for the area. And it was a remarkably successful system. And where it started to lose steam and, and start to get diminished in response times and, and availability of paramedics is when we started losing communities from the system. Because with them, with, with communities going ALS on their own and then leaving the system, we would see reduced call volumes for the overall system, which in turn meant reduced revenue, which in turn meant reduced resources capable of being deployed. So it's a kind of a, you know, obvious trickle-down effect. The most, two significant ones, probably because they're A, large, and B, the most recent, was losing the towns of Sudbury and Acton. One, when they went ALS, we saw, within the system, we saw some really significant impacts and, and very obvious gaps that needed to be filled in, in terms of response times and availability.
So, sorry, just before you go, uh, move off of that. So I'm just following along on the slides here. So you've mentioned that different town, Wayland, Acton, Sudbury, Littleton, Westford, Lexington, Bedford have all transitioned to the ALS.
Yes.
Level. So just for understanding, so each of those towns has their own, within their town, has their own system?
Each of, each of those towns, the fire department is the EMS provider, including ALS. So each of those towns, the firefighters who staff the ambulance are also paramedics.
Got it, got it, okay. And do they, does each of those towns have the same kind of level of, of staffing? Do you know, I just, maybe you know, maybe you don't.
Well, I do. I think, I think the, we are probably the second largest in terms of level of staffing with that group. I'm not sure about Westford, but Lexington is, Lexington is probably about 14 employees more than us. Lexington has 58 paramedics on the department. And then down to Wayland of that group would be the, the smallest probably. Yeah, so I think the department size has probably ranged from 20 or 24 up to about 60, 62. And we're at, uniformed staff on shift, we're at 44.
Got it. And did they, all of their folks, did they train them all up from, to paramedics?
I think, well, Lexington, when they first, when they first implemented the system, they did. They trained existing staff. And then since then, they have routinely replaced people through attrition with, with paramedics.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, there's not a mix, there's not, these towns don't have a mix of like, some people are paramedics and some people are EMTs? Or they all?
Oh, no, they do, no, they do.
They do, okay, so there's still a mix?
Right.
Yeah, they're not training everyone to be a paramedic?
Absolutely, yeah, no, everybody does not have to be a paramedic.
Got it, great, thanks.
Okay, so back to those towns. The, the towns in our region that provide ALS, we just talked about, Lexington, Acton, Sudbury, Wayland, Westford, Littleton, and Bedford are our closest neighbors that provide ALS service. And if you look at that chart, it shows you from highest percentage to lowest percentage what percentage of transports or patients are being treated at the ALS level. The highest is Lexington at 66, the lowest is Concord at 42%. The biggest distinction between Concord and those other towns is that we are using a third-party to provide our ALS service, whereas they have, their, their ambulances are staffed with paramedics. So we're relying on a third-party service, their availability, and their location. All of those things factor into whether we, whether we get ALS service or not, whether we get it in a timely fashion or not. And I'd like to, I'd like to just stop here for one second. I said this at the finance committee and I just want to reiterate it. When I'm, when I make a statement like I just did, I don't want it to be viewed as a reflection on the provider that we use. Because they have been, Pro EMS has been an absolute fabulous partner. But they're in business. And the, the reality is, is they just cannot provide the, they can't deploy the level of services that they used to with the call volume that we're seeing. It's just, it's not possible. So anything I say that may be construed as a criticism of, of that company, please know that it's not. They've been, they've been fabulous, they're helping us with this. They're, they're helping us with a lot of the data and the background info.
Sorry to interrupt again, but, so, just, the, but the decision to, I mean, ALS is a medical decision, right? Isn't it? So like, some, whether or not somebody needs advanced life support is.
Right.
A decision that's made, somebody calls in and says, hey, what, what's the medical sort of, hey, do I need to deploy ALS? Like, this chart is sort of implying like, hey, Concord should be higher. But isn't it like dependent on what the call is?
I mean, Concord should be higher. There is not any significant difference in our demographic to those towns. Dr. Kringle will be able to explain this a little bit better. It's not so much a, it is a medical decision, but it is a protocol-based medical decision.
Right.
So we're governed by the, we're governed by the Massachusetts Office of Emergency Medical Services, pre-hospital protocol. And the, the criteria for an ALS call is, is outlined and, and very, very clear for all of the different natures of medical emergencies. So it's not that those towns are providing a service that they, that they can provide, but maybe don't necessarily need to. They're providing a service that is, they're, they're capable of doing it, they're certified to that level, and they're required to do it for the call that they're on because it meets the protocol for an ALS call. We're at 42% because our staff, only trained to the BLS level and certified to the BLS level, is prohibited from providing those advanced services. So many of our calls would be coded at the ALS level, but we can't treat them that way.
And, and what you said at the finance committee, I had the same question as Cam, but you, you clarified it. You said, then they go to Emerson Hospital to get the ALS care because it's faster to get there than to wait for the Pro EMS. So they are an ALS medical case, but it's just that our guys are not able to do it.
And, and often that's the case, that Emerson may be closer. And I'm going to leave that to Dr. Kringle because he's going to explain that and why that's important much better, much better than I can. And I think, Dr. Kringle, I think I'm at that point.
So can I just ask one clarifying point? It's really because Pro EMS is not available to you, right? So you've got to get that patient to the hospital, they're just not here.
So we, we're. So, we, we're obligated, you know, if it's an ALS level call,
Yeah.
we're obligated to provide them ALS-level service. And if the hospital is the closest ALS
Okay.
then we have to, you know, we have to make a transport decision.
Okay.
And we will, we will transport if, you know, if they're coming from some distance.
Okay.
Whether that's a good choice or not, Dr. Krang is gonna explain.
Okay.
Can someone please define what the words ALS mean for the listening audience? Thank you.
I'm sorry. We love a good acronym. Advanced Life Support, as opposed to BLS, which is Basic Life Support.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hello, I'm Dr. Ryan Krang. I'm an emergency physician at Emerson Hospital. I'm the EMS Medical Director for the Town of Concord. So to, to answer that question, and sort of thank you for that great transition, chief, if you have a patient that is, say, 10 minutes from Emerson Hospital, and there's a 911 response, you know, dispatch determines, you know, it's a patient that's unresponsive, that would warrant an ALS response. Or patient with chest pain, that would warrant an ALS response. The way dispatch then sends, you know, so Concord Fire responds, and then we notify Pro EMS, we have an ALS response, and they, they send their intercept vehicle to meet us there. Because of the distribution of the towns that they are serving, in many cases, the, the time it would take for Pro EMS to get to that intercept, the patient could already be at Emerson Hospital. And so the patient therefore only gets BLS-level care, Basic Life Support, which, to, to answer the question that was from online, the Basic Life Support interventions are, you know, it's a medical transport, it's a, you know, there's, you have, you know, your patients are cared for by EMTs, by emergency medical technicians, but there are limited interventions that they can do. EMTs cannot give medications, aside from some oral medications, and some, you know, Narcan and things like that. EMTs cannot do more advanced procedures like intubation, you know, put patients on BiPAP on a invasive, non-invasive breathing support. These are interventions that are time-sensitive and that can be extremely beneficial to patients in, happening as quickly as possible. I have had patients in the Emerson Emergency Department where the transfer time was short, so they came to us quickly, but it was, the patient was very sick, and ALS interventions that started on scene would have, if available, would have, would have had a positive impact on the patient. So, that is, you know, this percentage, the 42%, you know, again, in the Town of Concord, we're very fortunate to have Emerson Hospital here, and I know that's, one question people may say is, well, if we have a hospital in town, why does that matter? You know, if we have an ALS versus BLS response, and the, the advantage is that you get that higher-level care immediately. And the advantage of the Town of Concord having an ALS service of their own, as opposed to contracting to a third-party, is having the control and the ability to strategize in how to best serve the town, as opposed to this being something that is shared amongst, you know, multiple towns, which is the way, the way the current system is. So, to speak to, you know, against, not speaking about the main advantage to the Town of Concord, that ownership and control of, of an ALS service. Again, the, the ALS and BLS differences, Advanced Life Support can do many more things than a BLS service can, higher level of care. The other advantage is, you know, Emerson Hospital can take care of the vast majority of patients that arrive to us by EMS, but in some cases, and especially now as medicine becomes continually more advanced, there are many cases, or some cases where that need to be transported to hospitals that provide a, you know, tertiary care level as opposed to a community hospital level. A good example of that would be a trauma case. So if there's a patient in Concord that has significant traumatic injuries, or, paramedics follow a point of, trauma point-of-entry criteria from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and Office of EMS, and those patients have to be transported to Leahy Hospital, which is the closest trauma center. Those are often very sick patients that require that trauma level of care, and that requires an ALS response.
Okay.
And so, again, those, even though Emerson is in the Town of Concord, and the vast majority of transports from the Town of Concord go to Emerson, not infrequently, there are patients that have to be transported a farther distance. And so having that ALS response immediately available in the town allows those patients to get where they need to go more quickly.
So, so, I'm sorry, I think this is a really important point. So I know it's not, it's necessarily the intent of it, but if I understand what you're saying correctly, it is entirely possible here, I don't know that we have all the data, but, that, so, like the other towns, let's just say 62% of the calls in Concord may have been coded as needing advanced life support. What you're saying is, because of availability, 42% of those patients were treated with ALS as part of the transport, the other 20%, we may have just driven them to Emerson Hospital and said, here, you know, that was the fastest solution.
That's entirely correct.
And so, you don't, you have to deal with it, right? So, okay. That, that's a very important point, I think.
And many of those patients, you know, you know, still, you know, they, they get to the hospital quickly, they do well.
Right.
But the advantage here is, you, especially if you have a patient, you know, that, that had a recent surgery at MGH, and they need to go to MGH, that's a much longer transport. And that provides a, you know, having that ALS care immediately available gets them where they need to go more quickly.
I did not fully appreciate that, from looking at the data. Understanding that means that there's a clear differentiation in service.
Yes.
Got it.
And again, that's no, no fault of Pro EMS.
Yep.
They provide an excellent service, but they're covering multiple towns. And so, again, the advantage of this change is that it gives the Town of Concord that ability to provide that service to our residents. That's all that I have, if that's all right, I'll sign back over to the chief.
Can we get into the financials soon?
That's, that's
Thank you. Thank you. We're running, we're running out of time.
Assistant Chief Whitney's gonna address that. But I just, one thing that I'd like to say that about what Dr. Krang just said, in terms of hospital selection, it's closest versus most appropriate. And without ALS onboard, we have to go to closest.
Closest. Thank you.
Good evening, Assistant Chief Whitney. I'm gonna hit on some of the financial side. So again, we got to this, this result based on service delivery and what's best for the community, but there's obviously a financial impact with that as well. And those were some questions that we did receive prior to the Finance Committee presentation. It's how we based, based these slides here. So, to start off with, just an understanding of the revenue and, and how the, how the revenue would work and how it would change, we showed you three pretty much completed fiscal years of actual revenue in the current system. So the way the system works with SAMARA is through a kind of a complex billing procedure, some of the revenue that's collected goes to the community providing BLS, the, the fire department, and the remainder is kept with Pro for providing the ALS service. But because of the complexity of it, it isn't always just an ALS or BLS call, we could get into that later, but the end result is really this. If you look back at the last three fiscal years, total system revenue, you know, million, million-two, close to a million-three, and about 67 to 70% of that has been kept by Concord through the, through the agreement that was set up with SAMARA. Meaning, in those three years, around 350, getting up to around $400,000 is the actual revenue that was collected and maintained by Pro EMS for providing the ALS service to us. So that's really the number we need to look at, is what would the change in revenue be versus the change in cost to provide ALS on our own. So that was just kind of some good background to see what's happened in the past. Going forward, basing, basing it on current billing, current billing, the billing rates, which go up 3% a year, this is what the projected system revenue is, and that breaks down to, there we go, breaks down to, to what we project over the next three years. And again, fiscal '25 and '26 were done just to show what the numbers would look like if Concord, if the fire department was providing ALS. Currently, we're still in the agreement with SAMARA, we need to pay SAMARA to provide those services. But just to see what a three-year trend would look like, we'd project, using the same number of transports as in fiscal '24, which is around 1,980 transports, not changing that one figure to be conservative in the estimate.
Yep.
That with the new rates would, would project around that $459,000 this year, and then going into fiscal '27, which would be the goal for us to stop providing ALS of around $487,000 in additional revenue to what the town currently collects. So basically, what Pro would currently keep at this point, less the billing fee, which is 4%, and these numbers are projected net of billing, that would be the additional revenue. And in the red is our projected additional costs. So again, to emphasize, there's no additional personnel for this, it's training of current personnel. The FEMA grant that we received is gonna take a, put a good majority of, of the cost of training current personnel. So the same people who are currently EMT basics responding in the ambulance will now also be able to provide the paramedic service.
So what does make up that, the incremental costs?
The $300,000?
Yeah.
A lot of it is salary structure-based, because there's a salary structure to pay somebody for EMT paramedic versus EMT basic.
Okay.
Some additional training, because paramedics will require some additional
Every year?
training for recertification on a two-year cycle.
Okay.
And then additional supplies, because now we're providing medications, you know, IVs and those types of things that are gonna be an increased cost in that. But those all come up to about $300,000.
Okay.
And then this, this is really, this is kind of how you get the assumptions of how, of how we got that $300,000. In future years, we just did approximately 3.5% rate increase to give a, to give an estimate.
But we don't have, we don't have to have additional shifts or any?
No. We'll have no additional personnel, the shift structure will stay the same, because essentially, essentially what we're doing is, is the fire department provides the EMT basics with the ambulance. So we're going to all of these same calls already.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, if ALS coded, we meet up with Pro. So we're going to them anyway, which is
Gotcha. Yeah, so instead of two trucks coming, you got one truck?
Exactly.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Can I back Cam on that point? Ironically, it helps the town achieve the sustainability goal. We use probably 1,200 calls a year, but we don't have another vehicle.
Very good. Oh, great.
And then I'll wrap up with just a couple of metrics. And again, you know, there's revenue and costs associated, which we have to look into, but we also look at response benchmarks, and we were asked about the metrics we look at. And some of the metrics that we do look at, which we report annually in some of the town reports, that's what led us to start looking into this. And we use those metrics to apply for that grant that were very helpful in, in obtaining that FEMA grant. And, you know, the, really the key metric that, that we use of response times is when we can get BLS and ALS service to the patient. And it really comes down to a travel time of four minutes to get BLS service there, and then the benchmark standard provided, you meet that part of it, then gives you another four minutes travel time to get your paramedics here. So that's eight minutes for paramedics. And in Concord, we're able to meet that, and that, that, that travel time is recommended for 90% of your calls. We're a little over 80%. So we're not quite there, but we do, we do pretty good. And part of the reason we can't quite hit the 90% is the geography of the town, it's a large town, some of our responses are distant, but probably more so is the number of multiple calls, meaning, once we have more than a couple of calls going on at the same time, we're relying on mutual aid to come in. And that increases our arrival time. But the key thing we found out with, with the current system we have is that that eight-minute travel time, we're only meeting 53% of the time with ALS. And by virtue of us already being positioned, being the ambulance provider and the transport provider, if you look at, that's just, that's a chart you see in a town report, if you look at a distribution of calls, this heat map here, this is a fire department heat map, you'll see that, that those bright red marks are where big core calls are, and that's why we're able to meet that BLS response time 80% of the time. And if we were paramedics, we'd be doing the same, we'd be meeting that same benchmark for ALS calls as well. Those, all those red, red spots are, you know, the, both fire stations are pretty well-located to, to meet that benchmark standard, pretty close to that 90% of the time. And now we're to the summary page.
Great. Very good.
Can I ask just one question? I, I think there was something there before, but around supplies, we visited the fire department recently.
Yep.
And space was at a premium.
It is.
So, what are you gonna do about the increased amount of supplies? And I'm sure some of that has to be refrigerated. You're able to accommodate all those supply?
So, part of our plan includes, part of the capital purchase includes a, for each station, it's essentially a vending machine, which, it's the best way to describe it. It's refrigerated, it is secure, it tracks, tracks inventory, and it has an audit trail as to who is, just, just like, just like, you know, hospital staff would use in dispensing medications. So that's, that's how we're gonna handle that.
Okay. So, the facility can handle it for now?
We'll find a way.
You'll find a way? Okay.
So, in, in summary, you know, we, we can, we're providing less ALS service than we're capable of. Our community is receiving a different level of service from, from other communities, and that's, you know, that's not a statistic, or it's just, you know, it's just kind of, to me, to me, it's troubling that, that, that we're providing less service than we can. We're positioned to eliminate that gap. It's a, it's a service-level change, there's no additional personnel, and the service level is going to, the service level change is gonna provide a higher, higher level of EMS service, and any added cost will be offset by revenue.
So, Chief Judge, the million-dollar grant is for training, as you said, no incremental headcount, right?
Correct.
And then the additional ARPA money that you're requesting, what will that be spent on?
So, that money will be applied to a cardiac monitor and an IV pump, I believe. We have a, we're, we're going to have a, so I'm, I'm preparing my capital budget right now. Depending on the outcome of that decision on the ARPA, will determine what my capital request looks like.
And this is equipment you need in order to?
At the ALS level.
At the ALS?
Yes.
Understood.
Yeah.
So this is equipment you need over and above the training that you're getting from the grant?
Correct.
And so that, yeah, and that wasn't included in the grant write-up? Or the, what you were using the grant money for?
I believe, well, first of all, let me just take a quick moment to thank Assistant Chief Walter Latta and Assistant Chief Brian Whitney for the work they did on the grant.
Yes.
Absolutely phenomenal, phenomenal work, the research they did. And to write a successful grant like that, it was, it was phenomenal. Assistant Chief Whitney could answer the question about the, the details of the grant and what, what it was eligible for.
Yeah, capital supplies were eligible, but the town, our size was limited to $1 million cap. So the grant we wrote was $995,000, that only covered the training, so it's just, we got the max we could get, and there was really no residual left for, for capital.
Great. Thank you.
Great. I have a few questions on the extra handout, where it said additional questions.
Sure.
Okay. So, on the first page, at the bottom, it says, the average transport cost for municipal-owned ambulance facilities was $2,000 per transport. That was in March of 2023. But then, on another page, it says, the total revenue per transport is projected to be So, does that sound right to you, that we're spending, is this correct, that we're spending $2,000 for, on average? I understand some are much more than others, but the average revenue per transport is $849?
So that was a difficult question to answer.
Yeah.
What the cost per call is.
Sure.
So, I mean, the way that we handled that was, the, the hourly rate of the employees involved.
Right.
The, and I used the FEMA reimbursement rate for a vehicle, because I don't, there's no other way to really characterize what the cost was of the vehicle. So, you know, factored into that is the hourly rate of people who were, they were working, they were already working.
Right. Right. It's a difficult question.
It's a very difficult question to answer.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, I guess, is this about where you wanna be? Like, we might, you know, never break even on it or anything, but is it, what, what are the benchmarks, or like, where, is, does this sound like a good place to be, that, to you, that it costs 2,000 on average and we're bringing in 849? Is it good, bad, something we should try to improve, or?
I mean, I think we're very similar to other, other agencies like us. We're, you know, we're, we're very similar. It, it is, it is so hard to quantify that number because, you know, it, we're, the, firefighters are working a 10-hour day shift.
Yeah, I mean.
And their salary is the same if they go on 16 or 17 calls, which is the norm, or if they happen to have a day where they go on two calls.
Right.
So, to, to break it out and assign a dollar figure to this one call is, is very challenging. So the way I approached that was, was really just with some basic, what do they make per hour? If I was billing FEMA for this vehicle, because that's just an established, that's an established rate used by the federal government, so I felt like it was a consistent number to use.
So you don't use a number that you're receiving from the Medicare or the insurance company?
Well, to establish what our cost is?
No, the revenue piece, I guess.
Oh, the revenue. I'm sorry, the revenue. Yeah, the revenue figures we use are, those come from insurance. So those come from Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, and self-pay.
Okay. 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 Then I had another question where it says, will the fire department, town managers submit BLS and ALS rate proposals to the select board for review? And the answer was ambulance fees will be set like other fees. So our other fees in town, we have a number that are set by the Rec Commission or the Public Works Commission. So can you elaborate a little bit more how these ambulance fees will be set?
Well, for the past 15 years, they've been set by SAMARA.
Yeah.
So that's been set by the group that, you know, that was agreed upon. Moving forward, frankly, that's going to be a decision that, that I work with the town manager on. I mean, ultimately, the town manager will, 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 will guide that process and, you know, the, the department will, the department will work to set the rates in whatever fashion we are directed to.
Okay, so to be determined.
It is to be determined.
Okay.
But it also sounded like, if I may, you're being, people inquire on your rates, right? Didn't I read in that information that other towns ask you?
Yes.
And so we could in turn do the same?
Absolutely.
We could, if it made sense.
So every year when, when that happens, the departments that send out those rate requests, when they're done with their survey, they always share it with everyone that they, that they reached out to.
That's great. So we have a good benchmark.
Yeah.
But also, if I understand it correctly, like, we're getting additional revenue, which you've projected out.
Yes.
That isn't necessarily mean that patients are being charged more. I, I'm not, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, because it, it may be in the 42%, it's something we're picking up from a third-party service. And the, and the rest of it is something that we may be doing on that ambulance ride that is now being performed at the hospital. I know it probably gets a little complicated as to all that, but it's not necessarily like, hey, we're just going to be charging people more because there's going to be more ALS.
No, actually.
I think a lot of it is actually not. You're picking it up from other places, right?
Yeah, the revenue increase is not based on, that's not based on increasing rates. That's based on, that's based on us bringing the service.
Bringing the service in-house, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Rates will increase over time, just because rates naturally do that.
Okay, I think we have enough information for our purposes. I want to open it up right now to any public comment online. Or Mr. Sloan, would you like to make a comment? You can stand up at the mic if you'd like, comment or question.
Do you want my slideshow still up or?
No, we'll see, let's see.
My name is, good evening, my name is Wick Sloan. I live in Concord Green. My agenda this evening is to thank these remarkable men and women, because in the past year, our family has been frequent users of the EMS and the ALS. As context, back in the 20th century, I served on an elected board in Connecticut like this one. So I understand, you know, the work involved. I've worked in finance and government, so that certainly doesn't make me right, but I understand the complexity of the policy and the budget decisions for a, a service like this one. And, and I just think it's important, it means something to me to come say thank you in person. My wife was very sick, and it involved falls and other things. And, and I emailed Chief Latta, whom I've met, and asked, could somebody help us get Betsy out of the car when we come back from the doctor's appointment? And, and he acted like, well, why are you asking? Of course you can. And, and there were falls, and, and it was a very stressful time for all of us. And, and these men and women just came and showed up and, and seemed surprised when I thanked them. And probably the most moving moment was, was one of them said, well, our job is to make sure everybody is safe. I mean, this is, you know, it's not to put, it is to put out the fire or arrest somebody or fix the flood, but I, the ultimate goal is to make people safe and to find ourselves living in a town where that extended to services like the chief has just described. I can't say enough, I was hoping for an audience of thousands tonight. Maybe I'll write a letter instead to the Concord Bridge. I've, I've been frustrated in other contexts in life that, that sometimes the descriptions like we've heard are, are one-sided, the one, the response time and the cost to get all the attention, and that's, they certainly deserve every second of that attention. But, but what gets left out of the formula and the calculation is, is what would happen if these men and women didn't show up? I mean, you know, people would die. People's injuries would be much worse. And, and that just has to be factored into the discussions of, of what to do here. So that's my, that, that's my, my piece is just immense gratitude to all of you. And I know those of you on the board and those of you in the audience, I'm just affirming what you already know about this service. The other thing I forgot is I, I really didn't, I was very late in life to learn about first responders, and that was when I worked at Bunker Hill Community College. And I don't, I'm not alone in being astounded at the training and the skills that these men and women have.
Thank you.
They, they, they may not complete a college degree, but they sure learned more than I did in college. And it's very difficult and technical knowledge. And so, you know, just to have them here working is worth every nickel, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. And thank you, thank you for sitting so patiently and waiting to have your say.
Those are my thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, do we need a sense of the board to, to bring this to closure as far as the, the ARPA funding? Because that was the whole point of, of this. So I don't think we have a motion. Mark, do you have a motion? Or is this more of a?
No, I do not. I believe this was really just to inform us related to how we were going to guide the town manager, who is actually making the decision about ARPA.
She is. But she does ask us for our sense of, our support. So I would like a sense of the board. Do we have the town manager's support for the ARPA spending for the ALS?
Yes, absolutely.
I, for one, would like to support it.
I would as well.
Uh, yes, I would, I think it was a great presentation. I, I appreciate people indulging some of my questions. I think it was a really great discussion. So with a much clearer understanding of how we're doing this and, and the need for it, I think, I think it's great to move forward.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for this and for all you do.
Thanks. And thank you, Mr. Sloan, for.
Yeah, where'd he go?
Comments.
Thank you for everything.
Yeah.
Thanks. And I apologize, I didn't find an opportunity to have Lieutenant Dostrowski speak. He was here because he's a paramedic, and if any questions came up that would be prudent for a paramedic to answer, that's why he was with us tonight.
Thank you for being here.
So I thank him for his patience in sitting there and.
That's.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda, we're behind schedule, but that's okay, is the MCI Advisory Board update. I see Dan is here.
Do you want me to go?
Please, please go to the podium. And I see Patrick is on.
Patrick is online as well.
Patrick's online. There you are, Patrick. Okay, so how do you, what I'd like to do is like to hear from you for a while, and then we can ask questions.
Okay.
How's that sound?
That sounds good.
Good.
And I'll try to figure out how to do this with Patrick, but I'll start and he will, as we have, we're co-chairs, by the way. I'm Dan Gainesborough, a little bit 12 mil run lane. I am one of the two chairs of the MCI Advisory Board, and I thank you guys for inviting us in to give you an update. I'm, I'm not going to, unless you feel otherwise, I'm not going to go through the memo that I sent you, that we sent you, other than to, to draw highlights to a couple of things that I think are worth acknowledging. Probably the most important progress that we've made so far is to organize the, the full board into three subcommittees. And those are the community engagement, the visioning and land planning, and finally the legal and governance. And in addition, in the course of doing that work, we've established, we've appointed the chairs, and they've gone and done a lot more work in terms of expanding and clarifying their individual charges, as well as starting to work on things like timelines and, and potential consultants that, that they would need to support their work. So that's, that's probably, in terms of progress made, those are the things that I really want to make sure that you guys know about, because that's really going to help us continue to accelerate our, our work. There are, there are basically three big tasks that, as I see, and, and coming from our latest meetings, that we need to continue to make progress on. The first one is to finalize and really do a deep dive into the goal setting for the overall project, so that we understand, sort of, that becomes the foundation for our work. So we know what we're going to do, we know where we're headed in these individual groups, as well as an overall committee. The second piece involves hiring a community engagement consultant to start to, because that is, as you guys know, probably the most important piece of work that we're, that we're going to do. And we've got a couple of meetings coming up quickly in November. The first one with the League of Women Voters has been kind enough to invite us for the first Friday. And so we'll be prepared to sort of give the, our, give people at the town a general sense of where we're headed and how the work's going to happen. And then the last one is sort of in, information management between the various stakeholders. I suspect everybody knows there's a lot of, a lot of people involved in this project, a lot of different organizations, state and otherwise. And so just sort of making sure that the information makes its way to the various parties that are generating it and that they need it. Two big questions, outstanding questions, both of which were sort of touched on today's most recent meeting. The first one is the role that the Advisory Board should play in the visioning process. So your, the, the charge as originally conceived, you know, that I sort of responded to, it, it makes reference to a number of places where one could imagine that, that aren't, we would be involved. But from our perspective, and I think also in conversations with DCAM, it's clear that we probably need to take that even further. So that, and it is pretty clear, based on the conversations today, that the Advisory Board believes pretty strongly that we should have at least a seat at the table, if not possibly taking the lead on the visioning process. And, and I just want to take a second, both for this group, but also anyone that might be listening at home. One of my, one of, I think, our concerns, collective concerns, is that planning is a, is a tough thing to do. It's also a tough thing to help people understand. And so as much as we want to get input from the community in terms of, and through that engagement process, we also want to make sure that folks understand what, what these potential scenarios would look like in three dimensions. And so part of our work is going to be to find somebody that can help us in that collection process, because it's really important, even in that moment, for people to have sort of a visual language, so that they can talk about these things, and they're all kind of talking with that same language. So that's, this is a big thing that we may want to come back to the Select Board and potentially revise it or clarify the charge, so that it is very clear what, 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 you know, how far we can extend that. We, as I said, we had a great conversation with DCAM today. We were fortunate to have Representative Simon Cataldo there too, who clarified very, without any, any confusion, what the, the total value of the money and what it can be used for and, and how to go about it. And then the second big question is, do we need, we as an Advisory Board need an outside manager to coordinate and support our efforts? So there's, there's both the process of, of, of sort of defining the work and how we're going to go about it, and then actually doing the work. Some of which Megan has been doing an awesome job of, of sort of, and, and other, other staff members of sort of supporting us. And, and the question is, you know, at what point does that become overwhelming for, for, for these folks that have a lot of other things to be doing too? And as you know, we are a part-time group, and we have done some good work. There's, I didn't mention it, but another thing that we accomplished was creating, one of our, our members created essentially a matrix that, that would, that identifies what we're going to need in terms of consultants, when we're going to need them, who's, who's responsible for managing them, approximate timeframe for them doing their work, approximate cost, and any sort of predecessor. So does one thing have to happen before another, before we can bring them on? So I'm going to pause, that was a lot. I don't know if Patrick wants to say something as well?
Thanks, thanks, Dan. And thank you very much, Select Board, for having us this evening. I'm now seeing myself twice. Sorry, Patrick McCurdy. I'm the co-chair of the Advisory Board, along with Dan, as you mentioned. I live at 1100 Monument Street. And, you know, just first say thank you to the Advisory Board on behalf of Dan and myself and the rest of our colleagues for the opportunity. You know, we do see this as a generational opportunity for the town. And so feel, you know, very humbled to be, you know, representing the town on its behalf in this capacity. In addition to the remarks that Dan made, you know, I think, we think of this period of the project, you know, I don't think we can emphasize it enough, the early days that we are in right now. And so in addition to some of the accomplishments that Dan noted, I would say it, it's also primarily been a period of discovery and learning, right? And kind of getting the fact base established, at least for our team, but I think also for the town, as to the, you know, kind of the state of the state. We've got a quite extensive list of stakeholders mapped out and categorized, and some preliminary thoughts on community engagement, both inbound and outbound, as well as different mediums by which to communicate with the town, its residents and the various stakeholders. As Dan mentioned, there are some important questions that have been, you know, very vigorously debated. And I think some clarity as to the hands-on role that the advisory, the degree of the hands-on role that the, the Advisory Board could or should take in conjunction with DCAM, right? And, you know, where those lines of responsibility, primarily between DCAM and the town and the Advisory Board, as well as others, right? Like Mass DOT, as an example, need to be drawn. And when, and when and where there should actually be some overlap in scope of responsibility, which, again, was a point of discussion at, at today's session. So, you know, we, we would expect that this period of, of discovery, as we call it, to extend for another several months. Doesn't mean that, you know, planning, visioning, goal-setting is not happening in parallel, but that the primary purpose of these early months is to make sure that we have, and the town has, the fact base and understanding by which to then, you know, proceed with what is a complex and, you know, relatively long timeline. I would then just finally emphasize what Dan mentioned today, and fortunate to have Representative Cataldo in his office join our meeting, clarify both the disposition, nature of the funds that are available, but also an urgency from him that the funds, the intention behind the funds and the amount of the funds that were granted being not, you know, being intended for more of a hands-on role than less, right? And so I think that that was a bit of the, the urgency that generated some of the healthy debate that we had this afternoon. I'll pause there, if there are any comments from Dan, or, or if we open it up for questions or comment.
I'm going to begin. I'm glad that you had a conversation today and got a sense of urgency as far as spending the money, because we know that expires on June 30th. So getting a closer look at that is something that I've been asking for, and I'm really glad you're, you're taking that seriously. glad you're taking that seriously. I am, I have got a few questions though. As far as spending the money, I'm assuming that the advisory board is going to be recommending to the select board and the town manager how to spend that money. Is that, is that the understanding?
That's my expectation in conjunction with Megan. Megan took a big leap into that by putting together initial budget.
Oh, good. I'm glad.
That was really helpful.
Thank you, Megan. Right, okay. Because when I heard you talking about all the different constituencies, I didn't hear the select board mentioned. So I just want to make sure that the MCI advisory board is a group of people who have the expertise that we're depending upon to advise the select board. And the other thing I wanted to kind of level set us on is that when we set the charge, one of the main things we wanted the committee to do and we're depending upon the committee to do is to get public outreach. So how much of your, when you said that you have a matrix together that looks at, you know, the different types of efforts that would cost money, how much of that budget do you have allocated towards that and what kind of activities go along with that? Are you at that far along?
Well, Megan took a whack at that, I believe. And shared, are you okay with, did I share with that?
Sure.
Okay. So it's something we're calling public outreach where she had set aside $100,000 for that and that spans both '25 and '26.
$100,000 out of?
Out of the 475.
So a couple, I would just add a couple of comments to that. And I agree, incredible help by Megan in drafting a preliminary budget. I think, Megan, not to speak on your behalf, but I think some of the assumptions that went into that were, one, that we would be able to spread the funds across two years. I think Representative Cataldo today suggested that they'd probably, that's probably not something we should plan on and that they need to be spent in this fiscal year. And then secondly, I think that it was clarified that the number is 725. So in this case, it would be, you know, somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000, as Megan outlined, in this fiscal year out of a budget of 725, Mary.
I would just suggest that, given that community outreach is, I think, your top priority and budget set priorities, that out of that 725 or 475, $100,000, you probably could be dedicating a lot more than $100,000 to that is just something I'd like to suggest.
It's a great point. I will say that, and Patrick can probably speak even in better detail, but I will say that that consultant and that, in recognizing the importance of getting that person on board, they're out in front. That group, community engagement, has already taken a pass at developing a really, a really well-considered scope of work. Patrick, if you want to talk more about that. Because we're feeling like we need, go ahead.
I would only add that, and I would only add that we're essentially pursuing a parallel process because of the urgency on community engagement. So John Boyton, who's the community engagement subcommittee chair, is actively, you know, pushing forward what will be a recommendation to the select board to then procure a communications professional in the near term to help us with upcoming, one of the things, to help us with upcoming events such as the League of Women Voters, which is the first week in November, Community Climate Action Network now, shortly after that. And so that's kind of one track in addition, Mary, to then a, kind of a longer-term track which needs to be clarified, right? That communications consultant could remain as an independent resource or could be considered as part of a larger, for example, if we were to engage a consultant or firm that were to kind of take on the project holistically and communications could potentially be folded into that broader scope.
Okay. That sounds great, great. The, this is my last comment. I think you mentioned, Patrick, that the, some of the subcommittees would be working concurrently. And I just want to make sure that any visioning or planning is done in response to community input. So I think they can happen concurrently as long as, well, I don't know. I just want you to kind of, you see, you see where I'm going?
Yeah, no, I do. And oversimplifying it, and I acknowledge that it's an oversimplification because development's never done in linear fashion. But that said, you would, you would collect the community engagement, which would then inform the land planning, which would then inform the zoning.
Exactly, exactly. That's how I think.
Yeah, and we're trying to figure, I mean, I think, it's interesting. It's a, it's a great group of smart people, very, who really want to get stuff done. And there's a little bit of impatience in that third group because they're like, what are we doing? And so we're trying to figure out if, incorporate them into some of the other tasks earlier on.
That's, that's very encouraging to know that the visiting will be informed by community input.
Yeah.
There's also, Mary, a bit, it's a bit iterative, right? And so I would expect that the community engagement will both be, you know, blank sheet of paper as well as kind of options, right? Visions for the community to react to, right? And so I think it will be both kind of top-down and some visioning as well as bottoms-up, blank sheet of paper, you know, the type of forum that DCAM hosted a few weeks ago.
Exactly, exactly. And different formats as well. That's why, again, I'm thinking, you know, if you're thinking different formats of getting feedback and is it, you know, wide open, what would you like to see versus tell us what you think about these various options? That takes a lot of effort. It takes some money. It takes some expertise. And I'm not sure, that's right back to my 100K, you know, really? Maybe you need more. So just think about it. Because that, that to me, when we wrote the charge, we wrote the charge, our main thing was community input, community input. And these are the people that we got in our town that knew the most about how these, how big, complex projects work. And that's why we, so that's, I've said.
I'll open it up to the rest of the.
I want to get a better sense of how this community input, what you're thinking, Mary, and what you guys are thinking. Is this going to be some public forums? Is it going to be surveys? Is it going to be that a consultant goes out and studies it and then presents ideas for feedback? Because I don't.
Exactly. I was waiting for you to go because yes.
Okay, okay.
We've been talking about all those things and they're all good ideas. And just for what it's worth, this, I think it's in the report. DCAM included a paper and an electronic survey in that first meeting. They got 300, if my numbers are right, I think they got 325 responses, which is good, very good. And then 287 or 284 of them were from Concord residents specifically. So and they're in the process of tallying that. So I think it has to be all, to your point, I think it has to be all those forums. And the point I was trying to make earlier that maybe I didn't do a good job articulating is, then you got to give people, folks, tools to understand it. Because if I say, you know, pick anything, if I say housing or I say mixed use, that's going to conjure up things in your, in your head, like we all do. And I think we need to have a shared language around that.
Good point.
Oh, I'd like to make a comment here if I might. I think that Terry's question is excellent and we need to respond in a way that, so the dialogue we need, community engagement builds on itself. So that means being able to use new and incoming information so that each engagement is different and more informed than the last one. And so I think we have some, you know, a pipeline which is going to produce that. So I think that we do have the right team. I'm really impressed with this team in the way that they're, they're doing this. I also think that with our partners, with the legislative group, as our legislative representatives as well as DCAM, we've already established the advisory board as thoughtful, as, you know, really skilled, and we have a great reputation as, in terms of how we're approaching this as a community. So I know that people want to, you know, jump to getting the solutions done, but there is information that's being gathered and it's appropriate for those community engagement elements to be developed in response to that new incoming information so that it can be an evolving solution that gets refined over time.
Great point, Mark. Good. Do you have any questions, comments?
I just have one question. Is DCAM still as collaborative as it was initially?
Yes.
They are?
I really feel strongly about it. You know, there was, there was even, I'll give you a small example of it. When we first brought up this issue of who was going to lead the charge, you could see that there, that was a big piece. It's in the legislation and it's very, you know, and so instead of just sort of saying no, there was an open conversation about, here are the three or four reasons that we're concerned about this, which just provides us with the means to respond. And so we have to do the same thing. Because at some point, we're going to come to a moment where, all right, who's driving?
Yeah, yes. That's good to hear. That's great. That hasn't changed.
Yeah, so, thank you. So great update. Love to hear about, you know, a couple of things that you mentioned, like there were all the advisory board, do we need an outside coordinator, some of those kind of process type updates. I just have a question, which is, are there other, are there big, like discreet decisions that we know about that are coming up? So I know that like the wastewater treatment plan is one, but just, is there anything else that we sort of know is like out there?
I would, it's been said many times, right? But the, the use of funds by the end of the fiscal year is certainly one.
Yep. But there isn't some, it's not like, I mean, at some point, there's been talk about like the state selling the property to us or like, are there things that are sort of like, hey, we know there's a decision we have to make by a certain date? No, there isn't anything at this point.
No, not really. DCAM has things that are written in the bench, I mean, deadlines they have, but we don't.
Yeah, and I was going to answer slightly different. I think in terms of starting to do planning, you really need some big information, you need the DOT, where are they going to come out with, you know, so those.
Got it. So it's still, so it's still waiting. I mean, still gathering and learning and fact-based and all that stuff, but it's not like because we know that there's like this deadline of this date that we have to hit. So that's all. I just wanted to.
And to your point, I think that was really the motivation behind establishing this timeline. Because we don't want to get, we always want to be a little bit ahead or at least in parallel.
Yep. Got it.
A reminder of where we really are in the process, the Department of Corrections is still visioning the facility and they haven't actually said when they're going to be finished with that.
That's a good, thank you.
Yep. And then I just had one smaller question, which is, I noticed in the notes, explore funding opportunities to offset lost pilot. Does that imply, has the state been, has somebody been giving us, how much money was it?
400.
Yeah, I can respond. So the state does give us, I think, about $900,000 a year in total for all state-owned land, some of which comes, is assigned from MCI Concord. So there's a portion of that. And then we also receive.
So we wouldn't necessarily lose all 900 because some would come from other, okay, got it.
And then there's, there's additional correctional institutional aid of around $200,000 that we receive. So we know for fiscal, for fiscal '25, the full amount is included in the budget. We just don't know what will happen for '26 yet.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
I want to echo something that Mark said, which I thought was a really good point as far as when we do community input, make it informed community input. And by that, I, why, what that means to me is, I went to a Warner's Pond community input event and the people there said, well, I, and they said, you know, tell us what you want. And they were like, kind of like at a loss, well, we, you know, they needed, they needed a grounding in information. So as we learn information, I think that would be a good way to start the next step of community input. That's just my personal observation. Before you leave, thank you very much, both of you, before you leave. What's the process we're going to use to make sure that we stay in sync? That we, I know in your charge, you had quarterly updates, but I'm thinking I'd like to have that more frequently, actually.
So we haven't really discussed that in detail. We, I mean, my first response was, Mark is, could be the conduit. But if you feel, if the board feels that it needs to be more frequent.
I do. I do. So I'm thinking maybe every other month or something, you could come in and give us an update on where you're at. That would be very, very helpful to us because we, again, we're depending upon you. And I think, I find this conversation very helpful.
Okay. And so what we may do, and I haven't discussed this with Patrick, but Patrick is, he has a little less flexibility than I do, so it may be one or the other.
That's, if you want to tag team, that's fine. Or, and I found your memo very, very helpful. So, you know, a memo and a quick update. You don't even have to be here. You can do it.
Shannon deserves a lot of credit for that.
You know, so.
In terms of understanding the format.
So, you know, that's exactly what we're looking for. And just be open to questions, so.
And I said it earlier, but between Megan and Shannon, we've been very well supported.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
A lot of work.
It is.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
No vote. Okay. Last thing, but not least, Megan. My favorite topic.
Good work. Yeah. Come in, come in.
Sir, oh, here you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Zamuto, deputy town manager. This evening, I have an update on your select board goal 20, to evaluate town-owned properties for possible reuse or disposition. So the first property that we discussed over the summer is the PBD school. I have a request for you to consider this evening to authorize the use of the land fund to procure an appraisal of the three parcels that make up the PBD school. So we're really at the early stages of exploring what the potential use could be. And my recommendation is to contract with a professional to analyze it further. And we have this fund that can be used for this type of work. And my understanding is that typically the select board approves these requests. So that's my first update for you this evening.
Questions for Megan?
What do we get as a result of that? I mean, it's, just describe like what the outcome of hiring consultants is. It just, what, it's just potential reuse? Does it do any outreach to the marketplace to assess interest?
I think, it kind of depends what you put into it. So what we were thinking is, it will do, try to understand the highest and best use for, for the parcels, look at, you know, what is possible in this area. And so, I mean, if there's certain things you'd like to look at, I can certainly incorporate that. I haven't had the preliminary discussions with, with the appraiser, with an appraiser yet. Sure.
Yeah, so I like the idea. I guess maybe sort of similar to what you're saying, Wendy, is just, to me, an appraisal depends a lot on what you can use the land for, right? So is it, is it appraisal for like, hey, if I could put 20-story apartments, you know, here's what I'd be willing to pay, right? Oh, if I can only use it for this, here's what I'd be willing, so it just, great, but we have to do, give them some direction as to like, what's the spectrum of possible? And maybe they can say, hey, look, if you use it for A, you can get this. If you use it for B, it's worth this, kind of thing. But we should probably give them some direction as to what that might include, right?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So it's not necessarily highest and best use because we don't want a huge, whatever, monstrosity built there necessarily, right? We have to.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, well, it's just like, what is this, I mean, I think we just have to tell them in the appraisal, like, hey, you know what, here's some possible things, or I'm not sure exactly how it works.
Don't zoning restrict that, though?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. I'm just saying, get an appraisal that comes back and says, hey, this land could be worth $50 million. Okay, great. Well, we assume that was.
Oh, yeah, okay. So we'd have to say within, okay.
You're under what? Are we, what's the spectrum we want them to consider?
We could certainly look under existing zoning or we could.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, it doesn't have to be, you know, huge, I just.
Sorry. It's just, if we're going to do it, just make sure we're clear with them, like what we're potentially.
Well, right, like for example, the septic. We have to keep that, right? So we can't, you know, tear up the septic on there. So, you know, we have, we have all these.
What's the capacity of the septic and what would we have to do to the capacity of the septic? Yeah.
And what about the fields? Are we going to keep it as fields or are we, we don't know yet or, you know?
Well, actually, you know, it would be interesting to know. I mean, we just finished our recreation strategic plan. Is there a need for that field?
Well, they are putting in a new reg field, field at Thoreau.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm just, I guess, I'm just asking the town. I heard in one point, we had a lot of fields, but we're also talking about evaluating that Doug White field. So I don't know, maybe if we have grass, maybe, I don't know.
Right.
I mean, I think we should still assess what the options are and, you know, best possible use is great. This sewer treatment is a little strange too, because the septic rather.
The septic, yeah.
So it almost seems like the appraiser needs to give us some options because we don't know yet what we're doing here.
Well. the School Committee and the Finance Committee, brought up the idea of putting out a letter of interest to developers to say, "Hey, what would you do with this land?" Just to get some, just to see what the development community thought. And at that time, I think the feedback you got, I know from the FinCom, was, "I think we should do some due diligence beforehand to find out what's it worth." Or, you know, and that's where we thought, I think that's where the genesis of this idea, which is, "Well, we should get an appraisal to find out what it's worth." But now, we, we're, worth is what? So...
Going in circles.
So, we are. So, I think the, the challenge you have, Megan, is to write an RFP that confines it to things that are realistic, right? But doesn't cut off other things. Like, for example, the housing community is interested in that for affordable housing, right? So, that's a whole, that's not the high, that might not be the highest and best use if you think of it as, "How do we get the most money out of this piece of land?" But from the town's perspective, it might be. So, it's a challenge.
So, it sounds like...
I think Megan's up for it.
Yeah, it sounds like the RFP would have, like, one option for the...
Are you, are we?
Yes.
You are.
She knows, yeah.
I just, I, I worked on one in Maynard for an old-school building that was on Summer Street, so it's just off of the downtown, and it was, you know, the envelope was, like, what, what could the future of that be? Could they keep the actual building? What could be done? What, what would happen if it was knocked down? How many lots could you have? And, you know, thinking about some of the other important housing production plan and some of the community goals, and, and how would it fit in to meet some of those goals? And, you know, I think that appraisal came back with some helpful data that informed the community.
Okay, that's all...
And so, that's the kind of approach I was thinking for this.
That's it. That's right. It's not, it's not a decision, or it's just some information.
Still wants to see a range of options, yeah.
It's more information, and then the next step would be that. Will we get that back in time? Because we were hoping to go out with the letter of interest in November, December, I thought, right, Anthony?
More than 70, yeah.
Will we have that back in time, Megan, or is that unrealistic? It's already, it's already October.
Uh, it might be a little tight. I'll see what I can do.
Okay, great. Great. That's great. Very good.
Okay.
So, do we need to make a motion to approve the appraisal?
You do. Oh, yes, we do.
I have a motion to move to authorize the use of the land fund to procure an appraisal for the three PBD school parcels.
Second.
Mark, you want to take a roll?
Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Charman?
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye. Mr. McKennan?
Aye.
Mr. Raveli?
Aye.
Very good. Good. Okay. Want to talk about the Harrington House?
Okay. And briefly, the second piece is Harrington House. This is a historic farmhouse in West Concord that is appreciated for local significance and historical significance, and it is not currently being used. And so, I was looking with my team about how to consider potential new uses. So, this is really an update. There's no action for the board at this time, but I wanted to share what we're doing, so you have, so you know. We are working to procure an existing conditions analysis for potential environmental hazards to identify if there's lead paint or anything that we should be aware about that could consider future uses. We're looking into a couple of different options from property sale to a long-term lease. This is a unique property because the structure itself is owned by the town, but the land it sits on is conservation land. So, to sell the structure would require a land swap to switch out the land it sits on with other land nearby. There is a couple, you know, positive scenarios that we could consider for that, or you could all consider for that. And so, we just want to lay out what that looks like. It could be a multi-year process. It could include legal fees and legislative action. Or, the, the board could consider a long-term lease for, you know, either residential uses or educational uses. And I plan to come back to you with a, kind of a menu of different options for your consideration. It will be informed by the research that the team has done, Town Council is also chiming in, and the results of this environmental analysis, so we know kind of what we're working with. So, I'll be back again later this year.
Very good. Very good.
I have a question about land, the town-owned properties in general. My understanding was, we've talked about a number of town properties, and that I think staff is working on a matrix of some sort. Are we going to get an update, or, like, what's the timeframe on that whole project?
I thought when we came together on October, our next meeting, October 21st, and we looked at the Select Board Goals, that's right up there in the Select Board Goals, we'd get a feel, I, we'd all get a feel for, you know, where, are we making progress towards that?
Perfect.
And then, you know, maybe we've got to modify that, or whatever.
Okay.
But...
Great.
In two weeks.
Great.
Because they're, these are, I mean, there's an update on these two, but they're not the only two.
Right.
There are other ones we could still be talking about.
There are. These might be the low-hanging fruit, you know? Or maybe they're not.
These are the ones that are not being, either not being used right now or won't be used. The other, the other properties that we discussed over the summer have active, either municipal uses.
So, is one of the options on the Harrington, is, is there a decision on Harrington that it must stay historic? Or is it an option that it might not be? In other words, like, to sell the land and, and actually not, I don't know, decommission it as a historic area? I'm, I'm just, is it, I'm not saying we should, I'm just asking if that's an option.
It's a good question.
I'm asking if it's on the table.
No, it's a good question. It, it's, the land, the, it's on a local historic inventory for local significance. There has...
Concord.
For Concord, yeah. And there has been a lot of work by, I believe, the Historical Commission in the past to both work on the exterior and the interior. There's, there has been interest, is my understanding, from the community to keep at least the exterior within, within the historical context. There's a few different mechanisms for how to do that, that we've been exploring that are, that are outlined in the memo. Some are more cumbersome than others, and some require more follow-up than others, but there are, I think there's even more than I put in here, but there's a few different ways to do it. But my understanding is that there, there is a significance to keep this property historic from previous decisions, and I can kind of follow up on that for, for where those are.
And I wasn't sure what the vision, it's in conservation, it's on a, I don't know